All right. Good evening. This is Tuesday, August 10th, 2021, meeting of the Town of Berlin Planning Board. As a plenary matter, please note that this meeting is being recorded and that some of the attendees are participating by video conference. Accordingly, please be aware that folks may be able to see you. The ugly band shirt you decided to wear tonight, or anything you intend to or not screen share on your computer. Anything that you broadcast will be captured and recorded forever and ever, and will possibly wind up as a YouTube video that may be shared with your friends and neighbors. Confirm the member access. This is Tom Sanford, Chair of the Planning Board. Permit me to confirm that all members and persons anticipated on the agenda are present and can hear me prior to me calling the meeting to order. Planning Board members, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Timothy Wheeler.
Yeah.
Carolyn McDonald.
Yeah.
Janet Campbell.
Yeah.
Jay Teach. Here, I heard it here. And we'll get to the anticipated speakers on the agenda momentarily. With a quorum of the board present, I call this meeting to order at 7:30, 8:00 PM, Tuesday, August 10th, 2021. This is an open meeting of the planning board being conducted remotely consistent with Governor Baker's executive order of March 12th, 2020, due to the current state of emergency in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts due to the outbreak of the coronavirus, Corona-19 virus. Specific information and general guidelines for remote participation by members of the public can be found on the Town of Berlin website. The governor's order suspends the requirement of an open meeting law to have all meetings in a publicly accessible physical location and allows and encourages us to participate remotely. For this meeting, the planning board is convening using the Zoom platform as posted on the agenda, which includes links to the public to join this meeting. I will introduce each speaker on the agenda. After they conclude their remarks, I'll invite each board member by name to provide any comments, questions, penetrating insights, and or motions. Please hold all your insights until your name is called. Board members, please, and speakers, please remember to mute your phone or computer when you're not speaking. Speak clearly to ensure accurate minutes are recorded. For any responses, please wait until you're yielded the floor and state your name before speaking. If a board member wishes to engage in conversation with another, please do so through me to avoid multiple conversations at the same time. Lastly, please note that each vote in this meeting will be conducted by a roll call vote. Thank you all for your understanding and cooperation. We are live. So we have on the agenda first is any bills or anything that we have to pay any mail. There wasn't much. There was two items that we, there were questions. One was a question. We had the Form A. Somebody had made a copy of it and stuck it in the in Molly's mailbox, and then she wanted to know if she needed to do anything with it, send anything to the registry, or anything like that. There's nothing that she needs to do other than record the paper plan that she gets, right? She doesn't have to do anything with the registry. So I'll stick a note back in saying that we're all set. The other thing came up was we have something that was sent to us by Margaret, and it's basically a code of conduct and ethics for the boards. I think somebody or other people that have had are in positions at other committees probably have already done this already. So I'll have to distribute this for everybody to look over and sign. It doesn't look too evil. It's got to be done, unfortunately. And that's all there is for mail. There was a bunch of notices from hearings from other board, from other towns, our typical stuff. But that was about all. So I don't know if anybody else has anything that they want to throw out there or add, or anything we were supposed to do that I didn't pick up on from mail, but that's what we have. The next thing, if we don't have anything that I, Jay, I can't hear you. You trying to say something? Can't hear you yet. One second. Okay.
Can you hear me?
I can now.
I was just looking at the mailbox.
Yes. Oh, okay. The web mailbox.
Hmm, there's someone named Scott Cohen. Who sent us a message saying we are looking at a parcel of land in Berlin that we think would make a great active adult community. What's the best way to discuss with planning board? Scott Cohen Hawthorne Partners.
So Scott phoned here. I listened to the message a little bit ago. He's having his architect participate in our Zoom meetings. He's going to show up about nine, he said.
Okay.
And he's been in touch with Ron Johnson, who is the Realtor from Georgia who's representing Worcester Sand. So it could very well be that parcel.
Okay.
And Jay, what did he call it? An active adult community?
Adult.
Over 55. Ah, yes.
Well, if it's active adult, is there going to be some upper age limit to like 55 to 75?
If you're breathing, is that active?
Some days.
Yeah. Any on the day. For sure. All right. So he's going to join at nine. All right, fine. That's great. Is there anybody else, Jay?
Uh, I don't know if there's anything else that what's this Green Acres 40B cost examination? You know what that's about? Boarded.
Green Acres is
Mark Road.
Yeah, down off of Dudley.
Dudley, yeah. Mark's project and the, the state has to do a evaluation to sort of tie things up, I guess. And so they, they were in touch with certain, I know they were talking to Eloise, I guess, and maybe Margaret.
You want me to forward this to you guys? I don't see any attachment on it.
We don't, we don't need
Oh, there is. Yeah, there's an, there's a report. You want, you guys want me to send it to you?
Sure.
Eloise is here. If you want to ask her if she knows anything more about it, if matters.
Is there any action that the planning board needs?
Not that I'm aware of.
All right, well, we'll look at what, I mean, Jason's around and then if we need to add, oh, Eloise is
Got her hand up.
I just wanted to share, share it with you, particularly in light with other potential developments. These are some of the questions that Jay Teach was asking. And you can look at the report.
And so you sent it to our email address to provoke us?
Exactly.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, well, we can look at that and decide what to do a little bit later if we need to take an action.
We also get a hundred emails a week. Friendly reminders for Tom that he's supposed to be doing cybersecurity.
Yeah.
Fine. Keep them, let them keep coming.
Well, really, Jay, it should be for you since you're the one who's doing the email.
There you go.
What not to open?
Yeah. Pretty much.
Um, I will entertain a motion that we accept the minutes on the meeting held on 7:15, 2021.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion?
Good job.
Seeing none, I will ask that you vote to accept the meeting minutes as recorded. Carolyn McDonald.
Hi.
Janet Campbell.
Hi.
Jay Teach.
He's got a chipmunk in there.
What is that? Okay, I'll take it as an affirmative. Timmy Wheeler.
Hi.
Tom Sanford, I. Thank you. Passes unanimously. The next order of business is Highland Commons sign review template for Dollar Tree. We got the table that we always get with them, the spreadsheet and a drawing. And I didn't pass it around because it just was in the mailbox. Actually, it was in the mailbox from before, and we didn't do anything in July. This was prior to me picking up the mail for July's meeting and then the meeting. So it's stuck around for a little bit, but I reviewed it, and if you guys trust my judgment, I'll give you a little summary. It's within our permissible area and everything else. They have a Dollar Tree. They're allowed 321 square feet of sign area. They're going to use 276. So they'll below what their requirement is. It's going to go between the five below store and the Acton Medical Building. So it's probably where they do the, what was that, Party City or the one that they do that's temporary? That they have at Halloween.
Yeah, it is in that space. They've already got some green up around the windows.
Okay, so that's where it's going to go. So it fits. There's really not much other than that. Looks like all the Dollar Tree stores around for the logo, so that's not going to change. So if we want, I can write a little note to the building inspector that we've reviewed it and it meets our requirements, and you can issue them a permit if they want.
Do we need to vote?
We probably should.
I'll make a motion to accept the Dollar Tree signage from Highland Commons.
Second.
Okay, I got a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Okay, hearing none, I'll ask you to vote that we accept the sign as presented to us for the Dollar Tree store. Timothy Wheeler.
Hi.
Jay Teach.
Hi.
Janet Campbell.
Hi.
Carolyn McDonald.
Hi.
And Tom Sanford, I. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. So that takes care of that stuff. We still have a few minutes before we have our next person. They start at eight. So is there any other information we need to go over before then? The one at eight is a continuation of the Highland Ridge discussion that we had last time. And the proposal that they want to do in lieu of their affordable houses. But we can wait until eight o'clock in case there's anybody that's joining this meeting for that reason. I suppose we could take off, take, we had another, at 8:45, we were going to discuss, we need to vote on an alternate for the CMR PC. Jay has done it in the past.
We were supposed to have done it.
You were supposed to have done it? Okay. Well, you were the delegate, alternate delegate, so.
Good intentions.
You had great intentions? All right. So we were asked to vote on an alternate going forward, so anybody interested in volunteering again?
Yeah. Since it was such an
Call me like every five minutes for the day before the events.
Oh, you need a reminder? Is that what you're saying?
Yes, or someone else could do it. I mean, I'd like to do it. I just get overbooked. That's my problem.
What is it we're talking about? Because I missed that.
It's the alternate delegate to the Central Mass Regional Planning Committee. So our first alternate, first representative is Tim, and they want us an alternate in case Tim is unavailable to go or is indisposed or whatever. So Jay has graciously volunteered in the past, and we're discussing whether we want to have a different alternate or whether we rope Jay into doing it again. We can gang press Jay again.
I think he deserves another shot.
Yeah, to many ways.
Well, before COVID, didn't they serve refreshments when you went, Tim?
Oh, yeah, cookies.
Oh, I see. That was really the, so we'll send him cookies once in a while.
We'll drop off a cookie before he has to go. The day before, come by with a cookie.
I suppose I could try again. Maybe it'll be better because, see, I did a better job once I started doing the minutes.
There you go. There's hope. So I hear that's a nomination. I don't hear any other complaints, so.
Wholeheartedly nominate Jay Teach.
Second.
Oh, we got a motion and a second. Excellent. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, I will ask you to vote. Carolyn McDonald.
I.
Janet Campbell.
I.
Timmy Wheeler.
Hi.
Tom Sanford, I. Jay Teach.
Hi.
There we go. Thank you. Unanimously voted. Thank you.
Actually, don't we get, when we attend meetings, we get credits, right, Tim?
Yes, and I've maxed out the we can get up to three, I think.
Oh, there's a limit, and you already get it?
Yeah, I, I hit it.
Yeah, I was looking at our score. We got a great score compared to everybody else in the region. We got a lot of points, which we get consulting dollars for it to go in.
Yeah, they've been helping with mapping for conservation. We talked about him using some of those hours for the Center Village study to continue that.
Yeah, it's good.
It's good.
Okay, good. Thank you. That'll satisfy the CMR PC.
Were you expecting anybody to attend for the Highland Ridge discussion?
Well, it was a continuation of our talk from last time.
Right.
So
There's no one here.
There isn't. Okay.
No.
Well, we were asked to put them on the agenda last time, last meeting. And I had them booked for eight o'clock, so I don't know. No one has contacted me or emailed me to say that they weren't going to be there.
I guess they have four more minutes.
Yeah, we got a few moments. We told them we're going to be on Zoom, so.
Right. Yeah, conservation's back to Zoom.
I think everybody's going to be back to Zoom before
Oh, is that right?
Yeah.
Went live and then went unlive, huh?
Yeah, kind of a bummer.
Yeah.
But we actually didn't have any meetings in July. So. Yeah. Yeah, it'll be interesting. It'll be my first time running a Zoom meeting.
Did you do them before? Who was the chair before? Oh, Amy was the chair.
Yeah.
I got it.
Yeah.
No.
Well, my sister's son's family all has COVID, and they were all vaccinated. But they live in Florida, which is like
Yeah, which is like a Petri dish.
5% of the population is vaccinated, you know.
Yeah, yeah, it's terrible. They're not very sick, I assume.
Pretty sick, but not in the hospital or anything.
Right.
As Megan said, there's people showing up to labor all the time with COVID.
Now.
How sick are they?
Uh, some pretty sick. Some, they don't keep, they only have like 13 rooms that they can isolate people over there. So they, if they're well enough, they send them home, and if not, they pack them off the list. But she said what happens is they come in and then they sit in the waiting room, and then all of a sudden, everybody is now exposed. Said it's awful. And she said that if she, if she was doing percentages, she said it's probably 90 to 95% aren't vaccinated.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So it's a shame, but
It is a shame.
Because those people are keeping the virus alive, so it gives it a chance to mutate. Yeah, it again, you know?
Yeah, they're actually, she said they're worried not about the Delta, they're worried about the Gamma, which is X variant, which is supposedly more transmissible than Delta, which is pretty transmissible.
Right.
It's only going to get worse.
Wow.
We had breakfast with one of the granddaughters that was visiting here from California with her daughter, who's four. That's a great granddaughter. And she doesn't believe in it, and she's brilliant. I don't understand, you know?
Doesn't believe in the vaccine or the disease?
The vaccine.
That's strange.
And she really is brilliant, you know? But she's stupid about
Should have told her your polio was kicking up. Oh, yeah, that's right. I don't have polio.
Well, I, I said to another friend of mine I found out wasn't vaccinated. I said, don't you remember polio? And she said, no, I think that was when I was really little.
Lucky for her.
Good.
Yeah.
I bet her mother got it done.
Yep.
Oh, sure.
Yep.
Yeah, craziness.
It is. It's just, and unfortunately, the rest of us are paying the price for, right?
Well, NPR talked to some hospital administrator in Arkansas or Louisiana yesterday morning, and she was just heartbroken because she had pregnant women who were losing their kids and little babies that had it, and they just lost a 16-year-old and wow, just because they didn't want to get vaccinated.
I actually, on NPR last week, I heard that there's becoming a black market for vaccination certification cards.
Yeah.
And I'm like, are you kidding me? You're going to go through all that effort and all that money instead of getting a free vaccine?
Doesn't make sense.
It doesn't make sense.
It's got to be like, it's going to become like smoking, because you know, smoking got, smoking finally stopped when most people started to think it was dirty and smelly and ugly. I think that's what really finally stopped it.
Yeah, the public shaming.
Yeah, so we got to get to the point where people who are vaccinated start to have that same negative attitude.
I think we put the unvaccinated on a ship and put them out to sea.
See, bring it back in six weeks, see who's still there.
I have a cousin who is extremely successful and pretty bright, lives in outside of Houston in Katy, Texas. He's had terrible asthma all his life. And he is with the group that doesn't believe it, and he got it, and he almost died.
Wow.
Now, all of a sudden, he believes in it. But it's stupid to get that many people sick in order to get them to believe.
Yeah.
It's craziness. Is there anybody What? I'm sorry.
That gin in that glass mixed in?
Oh, no, no, no.
Not yet.
Cranberry salsa. Well.
Uh, Tom, there is no one here.
Okay, that was
Other Eloise is still here, but
We were going to do some homework on this topic, weren't we?
We were. So Tim has got some information. I think he wanted to share with us, right, Tim?
So I attended, no, actually Eloise and I and Margaret spoke to the two staff people with the Asta bit Regional Housing Collaborative about Berlin specifically and, and you know, what we needed to do to help them manage our subsidized housing inventory and stuff like that. So in the process, I asked about this program that the group here on Highland Ridge is trying to pursue. And, and Eloise can join in too and share what her thoughts are, but you know, they said they always like to see inclusionary zoning included. I said that someone in our group, I can't remember who, had suggested that perhaps they just build the structure that they want on site. And I maybe do a hybrid where they still build five affordable units integrated into the project and then build the five joint units somewhere on the property independently of the other stuff. And they thought that was a great idea because it satisfied the, the need perhaps for this type of housing, but also contributed to the, the, the need of families to find affordable units and not just individuals with particular needs outside of what you'd normally find. So I thought, I mean, I thought their comments were constructive and, and sort of in line with some of the things that we'd been talking about the last time we met anyway, so. That's what I came away with from them. And I think, I mean, if Eloise wants to add in, she can raise her hand.
I have a, there we go.
I think you summed it all up, Tim.
Oh, good.
Well, whatever is proposed will be substantial, substantial, substantial enough that we will need to take this back to town meeting, right, for an amendment?
I, I think that that's true. And that being the case, my recollection is that you need to build affordable units on a pace with market rate units. We have some formula there, I think, that you just can't build all the market rate units and say, I'll build the affordables later. You've, you've got to, it's got to go hand in hand, so. I, it seems as though they wouldn't be able to build any market rate units until either they decided to include the 10 in amongst the rest or went for a modification at town meeting to allow them to do the, the joint single structure. Pardon? So a fall town meeting, you know, if we have one.
Right. Yeah, I, I definitely have two thoughts about this.
Could I just interject? I was told August 12th, the census housing number is supposed to be released.
Yeah, that's what I heard. So all that census data about redistricting and SHI and all that stuff is going to be
Welcome to Berlin.
Anyway, what were you going to say, Carolyn?
Uh, well, so I had two thoughts about this, especially in reading the minutes. It kind of coalesced everything for me. So first of all, because of the timing of them building these units and the, uh, building the 66 units now, if even we had the ability, because I do think you're right, I think we do have to go to town. If even we had the ability, because I do think you're right, I think we do have to go to town meeting. Even if we had the ability to say, sure, yeah, let's do this. What, what promise, what do we have other than them saying, oh yeah, we'll do that for you? Um.
Well, we do, if, if the language is in there, and I'm sure it is because we've copied it from other over 55s. There was a ratio of how many market rate versus how many affordables they could build in any one time. So if they was, say the formula was 10 and one, they could only build 10 units and they have to put their first affordable in. So I mean, they could put 10 units in, stop and see if town meeting has got an appetite for changing this around or not.
Right. Right.
Build some affordables along with that and then see if roll the dice and the last five.
Right. My, but we still have nothing but their word that they would then build these other homes. Once they, once, e- even if they were allowed to have all 66 units as market rate units. How do we hold them to building these other projects? What kind of ti- how do we give them a timeline? How do we, I mean, there, there's just so many unknowns and there's so many promises.
Right. Well, I would assume that it's tied to occupancy permits. So they can't get their rockets, occupancy permits until they satisfy the, you know, their, their.
Affordable, one way, which.
Their whole agreement, the whole agreement, you know?
Sure.
If you didn't run, put the roadway in, you're not gonna put the, the top coat and everything else until all the units are built.
Right.
So i- it'll be unfinished road and be part of the, their agreement that they're in breach of. And then the town will just say, no, we're not gonna give you the occupancy permits. You can't sell these. And so you've got them, you know, I mean, they could take pre-sales, but they couldn't close the deal until they finish their agreement.
Then what happened down here at Alden?
What was that?
Remember, we let them off the hook for their, for their affordable units at Alden?
No, we didn't.
No, we, we had affordable units. The problem with Alden was that they weren't in perpetuity. So they were able to pull them out when they couldn't sell them, you know, on. They couldn't find a, couldn't find a qualified buyer. When they went to.
So what, what happens, what happens from this stopping again, starting again?
For, for them pulling it out of the, um, they're in perpetuity?
Yeah.
It's part of the deed, it's a deed restriction on this, on the over 55.
Okay.
So it follows the, the land follows the property.
Right. Um, my other issue that I have with allowing them to do this project and then build separate buildings somewhere else in town, at least two, is that's more uh, open space that's lost. And that is something that we're actively working against on all fronts. So and you know, we, the, the, as we discussed before, at the last meeting, the point is to have the mixed community.
Right.
So.
So you don't have a ghetto.
Right. Yeah.
Can't they be required to post a bond to guarantee that they're actually gonna complete the project?
I would argue that they probably would be successful to say no at this point because it wasn't disclosed when they were signing their agreement. It'd be like, we're trying to renegotiate their agreement at this point.
Oh, they're renegotiating it by having a.
Yes, we can make a condition now. Yeah, we can make it a condition now if they want to change the development agreement. But to say that.
Do these guys normally, do these guys normally start selling the units before the, before the?
Pre-sale.
Built?
Pre-sale.
What happened with Mark Rhodes? Green Acres. He was selling, building, selling, building, selling, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
He didn't wait till the end for an occupancy permit for the whole project.
But no, he didn't. But he was building, he was building the affordables along the line, along the way. He didn't build all the affordable.
Oh, he was?
Huh? There was, there's a ratio.
Yeah.
And again, that was a, that wasn't something that the planning board had negotiated with him. That was what was negotiated with um, ZBA because it was, it was a, a 40B. So they took the power away, right away from us. Whereas this one is a, an overlay.
So you've never heard of this Dover amendment that he was talking about?
Yes.
No.
Yes, it, the Dover amendment is the part of the 40B um, law that that strips away local zoning and bylaws to, you know, to allow projects.
Yeah, specifically religious and educational, right? It's actually part of 40A, I think. But I've never heard of it before, reading about it.
The only reason I have is recently um, they're trying to get the part that covers conservation land and conservation rules, local bylaws about conservation, pulled out of that. So that local communities still have at least that oversight. So there's been a lot of political action emails about that.
Well, I think from what he was telling us when we met last, last meeting was uh, they were, they were gonna classify this as an educational whatever, development, right? And therefore, under this Dover amendment, it's like, it's like a 40B, they basically can um, work around our zoning laws.
I would find that hard to, you know, my argument to that whole thing would be, listen, this is, you have an, an agreement in place. You're trying to modify this agreement with a renegotiation. Under this renegotiation, it opens it up to everything. We're already capped at 10%. So you basically, you're like, you're starting over. So we don't have to get into that discussion with him because we don't have to accept the plan.
Yeah.
Right.
So.
And this was never a 40B project to begin with.
Yeah, it was.
It was, it was, it was a.
It had affordables, but it was not a 40B.
Component to it, but it was an overlay.
Correct. Right.
So up, up to 30% of the market rate units can be built without any affordable units being built. But between 30 and 50% of the market rate units, when those begin to be built, at least 30% of the total units have to be affordable. And when you go over 50% to 75, then 75% of the units, of the affordable units have to be constructed.
Okay.
And, and then over 75, you have to finish off the 100%, so.
They've got about 10 or 12 building permits right now. But they're not getting there, they still have not finished the conservation restriction on the rest of the land. So they're not gonna get any occupancy permits until that's done.
So if there's 66 units and 15% have to be affordable. So that's the 10 essentially. And 30%, they could build.
Three.
They could build 20, 20 market late units before they had to build any affordable units.
But then they have to build three, right?
Then they've got to build, yeah, at 30%. They'd have to build three in that next cluster of between 30 and 50.
So they're gonna have a hard time trying to get this completed and before a town meeting cycle.
Sure.
I think so.
Plus they have fine property to build these things on, right?
If we wanted to buy into the notion of they're not building them on site.
Right, yeah.
Which they really don't have the space to. Because all of the land that is not gonna be under the conservation restriction is the 66 units. Although I have heard Mr. Vinicasa told one of the select, one of the conservation members that he is talking to Mark Rhodes about buying the property that Mark bought from Duncan that abuts this project. Just a rumor. That's what I heard. But, but that would give him land to build these projects.
But did Mark buy from Duncan? That wasn't the lots that we were looking at.
Can't think of one other, what else it would be, yeah.
One of the lots.
Obviously, but most likely the lot closest to Highland Com- Highland Ridge. True?
It's quite a distance.
Is it?
Well, I'll pull up the map, yeah.
That is a bit of a distance.
Does it actually abut?
I'm gonna find out in a second. I've been playing with the assessor's maps and having a good time, so I'll do some more of that.
Man after my own heart. I love a good map.
Good maps. Assessors, maps, map, let's see. Maybe I'd be map 16, where's that? Too far. 15. Look at that. So Duncan's big piece does connect with this one. But the distance from the development, the, I mean, the development is way up above Mitchell's and, and so if, if Mark got all the extra land, then he abuts. If Mark is only getting one or two of the lots that get broken off, then he doesn't abut, he wouldn't.
I think what I was told was that one lot uh, is parents who had to build a house and the other lot they were selling off to pay for building that house. So probably the second one is the one that Mark bought.
It's only a house lot. It's not, it wasn't big enough to subdivide. It's like four acres or something like that, right?
And those smaller pieces were the more northerly lots, right? The big one was the, was the southern chunk, if I remember correctly.
Yeah, so I mean, you, do you think there's a swap that gives Mark the big chunk?
I have no idea. Just, all I can tell you is what Steve Vinicasa told one of the Conservation Commission members when they were out talking about the trails. So.
Well, there's 58 acres in the there was 58 plus the six. So it was 64 acres and they, the subdivision that we looked at, none of those lots were that gigantic, were they?
No.
Yeah, so I don't know, but regardless, building the, I don't, I don't really, the handicapped homes, what, what, what homes for the disabled on that site as it currently stands, there is not room for it unless he doesn't build some of his 66 units.
I'm looking at the plan that we got, we were given for that lot, which you can find when you go to the web, the town website, it's posted. And one lot's 31 acres and the other's 29.
Okay, so it does divide everything up.
And I think, remember they were saying they, they were gonna, they were gonna get A and R for two building lots initially?
Yeah.
And then there would potentially be two more later.
Yeah.
Right.
So maybe you split the two lots in half or something, but there's, there's plenty of land. And it's the the 66 units is labeled Ken and Chris Realty Trust, is that what it's called?
Yep, that was the original.
Yeah. So they do, they do touch, but then there's pieces carved up. I don't understand what that is. Yeah, they do touch.
Yeah.
TBD, I guess.
Yep.
But that's an interesting idea is they could build the two multi whatever, multi-unit buildings.
Can't build two of them together. They can't build two of them together, right?
Right.
Right. They said they had to be a mile and a half apart or something.
Yeah, mile.
To build one, yeah. It's your hybrid approach, right, Tim?
Yeah.
Five, five affordables in one of those units.
Oh, right.
I don't know how the timing works. It's, it seems like if they proposed this a year or two ago, it makes sense, but now I don't know.
Right. Either way, I think for the development agreement to be modified, for the overlay district to be modified, it would have to go to town meeting.
Yeah. Well, what do we want to say about this in the minutes?
Opponent demo showed up.
Oh.
Great.
Jay, you're all blurry.
I know, look at that. Thought maybe it was my glasses, but everybody else is nice and sharp.
You held your hand up close, it was, it was fine, it was in focus. Your hands in focus. Oh, now you're in focus.
There you go.
I got confused.
Look, my microphone, some days it works, some days it doesn't. You never know why. Look, my microphone, some days it works, some days it doesn't, you never know why.
All right, well, we have a spot now until. A timely discussion at nine o'clock.
Show some YouTube videos or no?
Yeah.
So, the. I haven't done anything yet about. Contacting folks. About doing a regional, the production, housing production plan. We talked to. The collaborative folks and they said that both Karen Sonnenberg and Judy Barrett, who did the last two. Are sort of semi-retired and. So, you know, we sort of wondered if we could even grab them. Then when we were at the Center Village meeting. We mentioned the study and, and uh. Carrie said that Emily from Central Mass, on the Central Mass staff has begun to work on. Housing production plans for municipalities. The, the folks that, the collaborative said. You know, because you're already above the ten percent. Some people from the state have said, you know, wh- why do you even want to do your housing production plan? You. You've already met your objective. You really just need to tweak it and bring it up to date. You don't really need a major overhaul. And then we talked to them a little more and said, well. This might be. An opportune time with the new census data. And the fact that we are so. High in the percentage and will obviously drop, you know, to thirteen or so, maybe twelve something, I don't know, but. Maybe this is the ideal time. To talk about the creation of a housing trust. Because the folks at the collaborative really feel that. The best way for the town to position itself to maintain. The numbers we've got and to utilize the funding that we've got through the. Community Preservation Act money as well as the money that's come in from. Brook Lane initially and then Highland Ridge. Is to have a housing trust. And, and since the housing partnership really doesn't have the capacity to. To wheel and deal the way a trust would. Going forward with the trust would, would be helpful, so. If, if we were to do the plan production update. It might not be a lot of heavy lifting in the plan, but it might create forums and an opportunity to talk about. The need for a trust and maybe generate some interest on the part of some folks to be participants and members of the trust, so. You'd have the board you needed and, and then you'd have the vehicle that would allow us to expend a lot of that money and. Keep ourselves at the higher rate of affordable units we are already in, so. I, Eloise and I. Listened in to that conversation and I, you know, we said, well, you know, we'll chat about that with folks, so we, you know, we've got some time here now. It'd be interesting to hear what everybody else thinks.
I think it makes sense.
Do you have any thoughts, Eloise? Well, we know you have thoughts. Thoughts on this, Eloise?
I, I asked how many of their towns had housing trusts and they said all of them.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Which surprised me.
No, when we, when the collaborative group meets. You know, that was one of the questions I asked them way back in the beginning, because I thought maybe if there were other towns that didn't have them, we could. Do a co-op of some sort, you know, and they said, no, everybody's got one. It was like. The conversations we used to have about, well, who has a town administrator? And they said, well, everybody does except you, you know, so. We're in the same boat with this housing trust deal too. And a lot of those towns don't have CPA money, whereas we do, so having that funding coming in. You only want to be able to utilize it effectively and, and the trust would be one way to accomplish that.
What are the logistics about setting up a trust?
My sense was we'd have to go to town meeting and there must be some chapter and verse that we'd be. Accepting and then that would authorize us to. Create, appoint the committee and then. They end up, in my sense, having a lot of autonomy.
I believe usually there's about seven members. And they, it from a broad range, so you might want a builder, an engineer, a lawyer.
Realtor.
A cast of thousands. Uh, the, the advantage is if you have like the, uh, when we had the three units that. Couldn't, you have to find a buyer within sixty days. They have to be qualified. If not, the housing unit can be sold for market rate. And then, well, that was one of my big things to join this, you know, maybe they can do a group. This is banking, because in order to get a forty B place, you have to go to a banking class. And I'd like to see people pre-approved so that if we're in this, they can, you know, we can expedite somebody moving in. Instead of always getting broadsided.
Yeah.
Right.
Uh, but they have a bunch of pamphlets out. If you want, I can send one. I think it's like. Either forty or seventy pages. I mean, they're not casual reading. A sutile way to go to sleep.
Yeah.
So if. We can certainly reach out to Karen and, and uh. Judy and see. Where they've done these more robust plans in the past and, and all, and they're familiar with what we've done here. We can reach out to them and see if they even have any interest. Um, and if we strike out with both of them, then we can chase after Central Mass and ask them.
Would be my vote.
See what happens. So I'm happy to reach out to, I guess I'd start with Karen and, because she did the last one. And see if she's still got an interest. If she doesn't, then try Judy and then. Go from there.
Right.
If that's all right.
I think so.
Yeah.
All right, it's a deal. Um, as for this gentleman at nine o'clock, I mean, all we're gonna say is. Um, a proposal has been submitted to town meeting for that site already and been soundly defeated. And we've got two. And. That site doesn't have uh. Because it's limited business, it's not as though it's a time bomb with housing gonna be built on it.
Right.
So, uh, uh, you know, I don't have any trouble.
Would it be the, uh, driving range?
The acreage that they're looking at?
Yeah.
Well, because he said he's dealing with a Realtor from, from Atlanta. And that's this Johnson guy and whenever I've talked to him, he's only spoken about the Worcester Sand piece. I'm, I'm pretty confident that that's the site. The, the, the driving range is under a CR, so the only land that could be used there is where the driving. Range tees and shed are, so it's really only an acre or two, you know, that's, well, probably it's two acres, but. There, you couldn't really do anything there with a over fifty-five. So I have this guy's number. I'm perfectly willing to call him tomorrow and say. Come and talk to us next time if you want, and this is the history of that site to date. And rather than us, unless everybody wants to stick around another twenty minutes. Just a thought.
I'm, um, I'll, I'll do whatever one, anybody wants.
Yeah, I mean, especially where tonight's just a preliminary conversation anyway.
Yeah.
Actually, Jay, you could email him. To the email.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Onto his email.
Yep.
And get.
Tim on it, that's it.
Yeah.
We can discuss it just the two of us, but if there's a third person, we can't. It's to be public meeting.
Yep.
Right. Yeah, I'm happy to, I'm happy to end the meeting if everybody else is.
Okay, after we end it though, we gotta talk about Ron's party.
Right. Well, hold on, Janet. There you go.
I have a terrible headache because I did my flamingo stand where I take my pants off at night and I fell over and. Wrapped my head against the corner of the heavy coffee table.
Ouch.
I'm old.
You must have nine lives.
You should be buying foam furniture.
Heavy duty PRD zone since the first of March. My bones should be breaking all over the place. They have enough fit about it, but they can't take me off of it.
Lord.
You need to ask Dennis for help when that situation arises in the future.
Oh, yeah.
Or just sit down to take your pants off.
I, I have learned that lesson.
Or buy all foam furniture. Foam furniture.
Yeah, do you want us to come over and wrap all your furniture in foam?
No.
On the coffee tables.
There you go.
It's a pretty heavy maple coffee table and I whacked the end of it and pushed it over against the wall.
Oh, God.
About a half an hour to get up.
If you're gonna have wood furniture, it should be balsa wood.
Balsa wood furniture.
What I need to wear is a Michelin man suit.
There you go.
So I'll move that we adjourn.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion to adjourn in a second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, I will ask you to vote, but prior to that, our next meeting's nine fourteen, twenty twenty-one. Because the seventh is a Tuesday. Nine fourteen.
Wow.
Yeah, I know. Long time. So anyways, eh, we, if I call your name, please vote in the affirmative, so we can leave. Carolyn McDonald.
Hi.
Hannah Campbell.
Hi.
Jay Teach.
Hi.
Tim Wheeler.
Hi.
And Tom Sanford, hi. Thank you all. We voted to adjourn. What?
Before you go, can I ask you to start using my email and not Dennis's?
Sure.
What?
I have been sending it to you.
Three of your emails.
It's all lowercase, G R A N B E A U two. At Gmail.
I thought it was one.
What?
I don't know. All right, we got it now.
Thank you.
How the doodle poll go?
I think I only got one. Response, although I haven't checked.
I didn't get it.
Yeah. Huh?
I didn't get it.
I didn't get a doodle.
Everyone should have gotten an invitation with four choices of dates and you could just, you didn't get it?
No.
This doodle software.
Responded.
This doodle software is like so bad. I could have called you each and had a half an hour conversation with each person in less time than it took me to put the software.
I got an email with you, you, the minutes and said you're going to send something around.
Right.
Yeah.
For us. I got that.
The second part.
And there it came. Well, in addition to that, after I like typed everything in, it says that it's in Zurich time. You know, like.
Like.
European time and it took me like an hour to figure out how to turn that off.
So we're not, it's not lunch?
Okay.
Let me tell you the four dates that was.
The time was twelve to two thirty.
Good morning.
Was it really?
Yeah.
That's. I turned that off and then it turned itself back on.
I thought, really? We're gonna have lunch during the week? Is that?
All right, here's what I was trying to do. What I was trying to do was a choice of four dates. Uh, six to eight thirty, I was thinking, we could have a little party in the garden here at the farm. Um, we could decide whether we want to invite spouses or not and we could celebrate Ron's retirement.
Oh.
Yep.
I got permission from Cindy. It's taken me a year, but I got permission.
All right, what are the dates?
So the, the four dates are the seventh and the eighth, which are Tuesday and Wednesday.
Oh.
Twenty-third and the twenty-fourth, which are Thursday and Friday.
Is this September?
Yes, September.
And I said the twenty-third and the twenty-fourth, because I'm tied up on the seventh and eighth.
Even in the evening, that's not the uh.
Yeah.
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 It's a big, I got a bank meeting and a regional meeting.
Okay. So if we limit it to Thursday and Friday, the twenty-third and twenty-fourth. Are you guys available for that?
Either would be fine with me.
Either would be fine with me.
Oh, great.
Wow.
And then we're gonna have to take a vote. Somebody needs to make a motion to whether we're gonna invite spouses or not. I think we should.
Well, since yours is gonna be there anyway.
That's right, that's what I was thinking, tell somebody to check.
That being the case, the Friday's better for me.
Yeah.
Friday, the twenty-fourth.
Fourth.
Yep.
But I guess we should really make sure Ron can come.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, you know, if not, we'll tell him how good a party was.
Put her up in the corner, right?
Tell him how good it was.
Yeah, exactly. We'll get a flat Ron, stick him in the corner.
Maybe he could zoom in.
There you go.
And it's six to set to six, eight thirty, does that sound like a good time?
Yeah.
Do we have to leave at eight thirty if we're having fun?
Oh. All night, but. If it gets to be ten o'clock, you have to do night check. I mean, you have to go feed all the horses, fifty of them.
You have to do what?
Feed the horses.
Ten o'clock, we feed all the horses.
I'll do that.
Sure.
All right, that'll be good. We can talk about details later.
Okay.
Excellent, all right.
Nice, thank you.
Absolutely, thank you.
Yes, thank you.
So how, what are we going to do? We for, we throwing funds into our hat for food and stuff? Or we bringing stuff? What do you want us to do?
Um, well, I'll do the food, but maybe we could think of something, some kind of gift or something. Do you want to do anything like that?
True.
Somebody else has to manage that.
Well, you guys know Ron better.
Eh, 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 you, we. When you say you'll do the food, we, if, are we calling out or are you? Laboring?
Um, I don't know, I don't usually know that till we're closer.
I mean, there's.
Now we know why he wants the spouses there.
If, if, I mean, there's plenty of opportunity to pull in food from, and I, I think, you know, our, our pitching in to share. Makes, you don't need to take on that burden. Have some fun.
Um, you mean you want to do like a potluck or would, or?
No, I'm saying like, you know, there's. There's linguineys, there's bushel in a pack, there's, you know, I mean, there's plenty of places around that would.
Kada.
Kada, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, that may be, that may be what she wants to do. Yeah, yeah, that may be, that may be what she wants to do.
And that's, that's, I mean, that's what we did the other night before the wedding. We, we got linguine's stuff for fifty people, you know, and it was great. It was simple.
Yeah.
Just remember, I don't eat meat.
I was trying to remember, so you eat anything except meat? Is that it?
I'll eat anything except meat, fish or poultry.
Nothing with a face.
But you're not. You're not adverse to eggs or cheese?
No.
No, that makes life a lot easier.
Yeah.
All right, well, we gotta have a month or something.
She's done. Yeah, but there's definitely places, plenty of places around that would do a nice catering job too, so.
Yeah, absolutely.
Yep.
Yeah, and where there's what, five, six, ten?
Twelve.
Twelve.
Run.
Yeah, I mean. Yeah.
Should we invite anybody else? I was just wondering. Outside of our group, is there?
Careful, because it'll unravel.
Yeah. I mean, I think, yeah, maybe we just stick it, stick to our group.
Yeah.
I don't know if you guys can think of anything to give him too. I don't know what.
Yeah, that's tricky.
Some memento of his.
I know, so what's representative of?
Well, he flies, you know?
Well, anything related to the planning board that.
Yeah.
Looking around, I don't know, but he flies.
Have a set of plans, Bron.
Air cert, I mean, he was, you know, in the.
Oh, that's right.
Yeah, he certified, um, I think it was helicopters to fly.
Yeah.
Yeah, my, my daughter Erin for a physics project at, at WA last year. She had to interview somebody that used physics in their day-to-day working career. And she interviewed him. Yeah, and he was really happy to do it and he gave her all kinds of information and stuff like that. And, you know, it really is, he uses physics, so.
Yeah.
Well, the stuff that he does, so it was pretty fascinating. She was really happy and he was happy to do it and so worked out well.
Awesome.
Yeah, yeah.
Uh, so someone named Theo Kindermans just arrived in the audience.
That's the architect.
Okay.
What a pleasure. We've already closed the meeting.
Right.
Yeah, but I mean, so, yeah, we can let him know what's going on.
Can you elevate him then, please?
Yep.
Thank you.
Good evening. Thanks for, uh, thanks for letting me in. I was, uh, going with the schedule that was, it's always, I thought it was a bit early for nine o'clock. So sorry about that. Um.
No worries.
I don't wanna keep you, uh, you all here long on this nice night. Um, so my name is Theo Kindermans. I am a landscape architect plan, site planner. Uh, with a company called Stantec out of, uh, out of Boston.
Um, where?
Uh, out of Boston, our.
Stantec out of Boston?
Yeah.
Okay, I know Stantec out of Boston.
Good, there's two Stantecs in, in Boston as well. There is an architectural firm, an architectural group. And then, uh, then in our group that our, our office that does the need site planning and, uh, and civil engineering. Um, so Scott, my client, Scott Cohen from Hawthorne Partners, uh, couldn't make it tonight. He actually wanted to sort of have, uh, just talk to, uh, talk to you all uh, about the senior residential development. He is looking at a site on River, River Road or River Street. And, uh, he was thinking about doing a, um, a senior residential development there. Um, he's got, uh, he's, uh, got something planned in Kingston that's in the process right now. We have, uh, the, uh, development in, uh, in Rantham that's under construction. Um, so now he's, uh, he has, is looking at this site and he was just kind of wondering what the exact process is, uh, for, uh, for proposing a senior residential development. And that really is, is sort of was my, was gonna be my question to you. How, how do we pretty much go about it? He, he was, it's not, is there a preliminary, uh, go around? Or is it just file complete engineered plans and that's it?
Well, the, the way Berlin deals with senior districts is that it's an overlay.
Mm-hmm.
So it requires a zoning change at town meeting.
Okay.
And the town meetings take place in May. Sometimes there's one in the fall. This site has been proposed for a senior overlay two, a year and a half ago.
Yep.
And it, it, it failed by a significant margin.
Hmm.
And the reason was that, um, we've, we had one senior overlay that had been built, as you're probably aware, um, that abuts this site with sixty-six units back in the early two thousands. And another proposal had been approved by town meeting and was, um, potentially gonna begin construction. It's currently under construction.
Yeah, we saw that, yeah.
So, um, in a town with, at that time, twelve hundred housing units, I think people generally thought that increasing the number of senior housing units to two hundred with three projects was probably more than we had an appetite for.
Mm-hmm.
So the planning board didn't support it um, at that time. And you know, speaking for myself, I, I don't know, as I, I'm aware of changes that are significant enough to make me think that it would be wise for the town, given the fact we've just added two hundred apartments. And we've got quite a few units of forty B. We've got sixty units of cohousing. We've got, um, as I said, a hundred and twenty, a hundred and thirty houses, you know, units of, of senior overlay housing essentially. So, and then we've got another hundred units in, uh, in some senior housing. So when you look at our mix of housing for a town of three thousand, well, it's gonna be probably thirty-five hundred, um, with the new census. It, distorting the numbers, we're already the second oldest town in this regional planning region that we're in. We're, only West Brookfield has a higher mean, um, average age than Berlin does. So we suspect that'll change a little bit with the apartments. But we're, because of the fact we're adding another over fifty-five, it may not drop by too much. So we're already an older town. Um, we begin to worry about, uh, the number of school-aged kids in the population to sustain a viable school system and things like that. So more senior housing on a site may not be as appealing to us as it might be for some other towns.
Yeah, 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 no, I, I, it's a, it's a very clear and good explanation. I know there's, there, there's a lot of towns out there that they say have too many school-aged kids and wanna, wanna add that, wanna diversify the housing mix and, you know, it's like, you know, tax, taxable units without any school-aged kids are good. So, but I, I do understand your, uh, your position here. Um, I mean, it's a, it's, it's a, it's a, it's a wonderful site. It's a, it's a good location. But.
Well, and as I said, it's, it's not the planning board that leads the charge through town meeting, it's the proponent. So that.
Right.
If, if you really thought you had a package that had great curb appeal and, you know, you could go to town meeting and lay it on heavy, um, you know, you might, you might very well win the day. You've gotta get
Two thirds.
Um, two thirds.
I know.
So it's a.
High bar.
Yeah, yeah, no, no, I know that, I know. Yeah. I am, I'm not sure what that ever, that was known to, uh, to Scott and definitely not to myself that there was already a, uh, a senior overlay proposed for this site.
Yeah, I know that the, uh, the Realtor's fully aware of that, because when he's talked about housing on this site before, I've said that y- y- the fact that it had already been turned down at town meeting pretty substantially seemed to indicate a position on the part of the town that it, it wasn't too keen on the idea, but.
It's still very much marketed as an opportunity like that.
Yeah, well, because it's own limited business and our limited business zone has so few applications. It, uh, he's, he struggles to try to find opportunities that would apply there. So I can see why he would use that lure still. But the burden really would be on the proponent, the, you know, you could get a citizen's petition to put an article on the warrant. For a special town meeting, I think you need a hundred signatures. For an annual town meeting, you don't need that many. I think you just.
Like ten. Yeah.
Yeah. So if you were to wait till May for the town meeting, you'd just have to get ten people in town to sign the, the petition to, to the selectmen to put the article on the warrant.
Yeah, yeah, and the fall would too, too quick anyways, if you, if I wanted to do that. Because I mean, you need to get, you need to get some momentum going and, and that will be, uh, way too short. Uh, this is, this is all great information. Um, I will, I will relay that. And, uh, I'm very, very grateful that you guys hung on.
Well, we were having fun, so.
The, uh, there is, if they decide, if you decide to go best route and, um, wanna proceed to something in the spring, um, the overlays that already exist, yeah, are gonna be the template that's everybody will be expecting to yeah, use as the model.
Yeah. Good, terrific. And then, uh, and I'm sure he'll be, he'll be in touch, uh, one way or the other when that time comes around.
Okay, excellent. If, if you guys decide that you wanna, um, come and talk to us more, uh, our next meeting is on the fourteenth of September.